All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here. This is the Tuesday work session, September thirteenth, and we have with us today Nafisa Fai and I are Percy in place. And Roy Rogers is Zoom, and we have Chair Harrington and Commissioner Trese are on a international water convention with Diane Tanaguchi Dennis. So we have Jack Liang sitting in for her. And yeah, so we're going to have some things going today. So Nafisa, do you want to start? Or should we kick it over to Roy?
Let's do Roy since he's online and slacking over there.
Yeah, that's right. So good morning, Roy.
Good morning. I see my picture very big behind you. That's great. If you want an autograph one later, I'll be happy to do that. Yeah, not a problem. Last Thursday, I guess you read in the Valley Times, Paul Savis and I made a presentation at 12th Chamber on tolling. It was well received. A lot of folks there. The headline didn't do it justice. It said we kind of bashed tolling, which wasn't really the case. We spoke about what the issues were in a very in-depth way, and how they impacted Washington County, and how he felt the impact of Clackamas County, and maybe some path forward. So anyway, that was it was an interesting meeting last Thursday. Tomorrow morning, I'll be going to the WEA Transportation Committee, which are going to be discussing tolling again. So I'll hear what they're saying about it. Friday is the reason I'm telling you this stuff is it didn't get in my little burrow, what I'm doing this week. The HB 2017 Transit Committee is meeting Friday morning. And I have an assortment of meetings that seems like it's election season, and lots of candidates want to talk about a variety of things. So I'm doing that this week as well. But Chair, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers.
Nafisa.
Thank you, Vice Chair Willie. Good morning, everyone. I'll start with TV Highway Steering Committee was last week, and I shared some documents that should be in your mailboxes, inboxes, I should say rather, with the board. There are a lot of interesting demographic data and ridership information in these documents, and lots of good information. And we had a really good discussion at the Steering Committee. Commissioner Willie and I were both there actively participating. And as the dates and the nature of the upcoming public comment and input for the project are now more clearly laid out, and it will be really good information to bring them to the full board and allow input and directions at the milestones. I think number one, information and approach developed to date and prep for future discussions, and then concept design, which is scheduled in spring 2023, and then recommendation of locally preferred alternative, which is also a discussion to be had in 2023. And then yesterday, excitingly, I did a OHA, the Oregon Health Authority interview. They're doing a community, our community mental health program, three-year annual certification or three-year certification. And I was the commissioner that was picked to interview, and it was a really good interview. I learned a lot about our own program in prep of that interview. But even the interviewees really commend our program and the work we're doing, and also cited that any short sights or any challenges is due to the pandemic and the shortage of the workforce. So I look forward to what the outcomes of that certification is and what feedback they give. One of the interesting question they posed, however, was, you know, they ask if our board actually gets somewhat of a program evaluation at the board level of the mental health and behavioral health program from the audit department. So I wasn't aware, and I was going to post that question, if any of our board members have ever received mental health-related audit program or report from the audit department. Anyway, something to look into our own. So they asked that, and I wasn't aware. But obviously, they are also aware that I've only been commissioned for a year and a half now. So they said just something to look into that for us. Yesterday was WCCC, and we talked about safe streets and roads for all grant applications. We had a discussion, really good discussion about congestion pricing, the letter that WCC is submitting to ODOT, and feedback was provided, and Stephen's reflecting. And I think one of the key theme I hear from our WCCC is that, you know, this idea that it needs to be the 400th level, 400% poverty line, and trip caps, and the three-mile diversion plan, which isn't anything that's on the table right now. So I think it's a really good feedback for ODOT to hear, and hopefully it'll reflect in the letter. We also talked about strategies around mobilizing the group around issues that have high-capacity needs, like the Rafa. I think we missed that opportunity for our WCCC sort of to get galvanized around that idea and show up and really have some lessons learned. Other jurisdictions have their community and elected officials there, and we didn't. So we had a really good discussion, and mayors were talking about their limitations and some of the, you know, support that they could use from us in terms of organizing and coordinating. And I think I'll stop right there. Let me turn it to you.
That's great. Great. Good information. Thank you very much, both of you. Last week, we had the Fair Board meeting and got an update on the fair. I'm sure Leah will make that presentation about the kind of the statistics of the fair. Of course, we had a week of fortune heat, so that had an impact on our attendance. But overall, we had a lot of people who came out anyway. And there was some increases, some improvements in some areas. But we're going to meet, I think, the missing piece has been 4H's involvement with horse participation. And so we are meeting with 4H here in a few weeks, and the Fair Board's going to have a retreat in a few weeks as well. So we're going to be doing some planning on what next year looks like, and what we can do to enhance the fair. COOPAC and Northwest Act are both on the same day typically. So they were at the Cornelius Library this year, this month, which was a good thing. It was a short drive for me. The next one, I believe, will be further, probably Telemok. But COOPAC, we have been, we had, we sent a letter of support to the NTIA, National Telecommunications and Information Administration. And so we are also continuing to push ahead on rural broadband. We have hit a couple of barriers there that are difficult. So we're going to be reaching out to our legislators and see if we can get some legislative help in moving ahead with the middle mile. So stay tuned with that. Northwest Act had the discussion de jour, as you would say, it's tolling. We're talking about Northwest Act as well. When you think about tolling for the Northwest Act, remember, is Western Washington County, Telemok, Platts of Columbia Counties. So you're thinking, how would tolling impact them? Well, they also have congestion in the form of tourism. And so they're not necessarily interested in installing tolls, but they certainly are interested in some of the funding. So we are going to be sending a letter to ODOT from Northwest Act with kind of a perception, at least an idea, some things that we'd like to see happen with that. So stay tuned with that. There also, I had sent them our draft letter that we are going to send to ODOT for some guidelines along that line. As Nafisa said, we both attended the TV Highway Steering Committee, and that's just really a dynamic group. And we've got some great ideas, but it's big-dollar ideas. And so it's going to cost a lot of money to do this. So stay tuned with that. But we are meeting monthly now. And so we'll be making some progress there. Yesterday, I attended the Public Health and Legislative Tour that they had put on. It was at the Beaverton Library was the Washington County stop, then they were going on to Multnomah County and Clackamas County. So they were doing the loop. There was a lot of legislative aides in the audience, and Public Health did a great job of talking about and updating Family Connects. It's, that's a great program. I just want to say kudos to you for the work that you did on that and communicating a message to our legislators, the importance that we have adequate funding for these programs. And so I'm sure we'll hear more about that. And then lastly, was the swearing-in ceremony. Tanya and I attended that yesterday at the Sheriff's Department. That's always a great ceremony, because we get to see the promotions and the new hires for our Sheriff's Department. And they do a great job on that. So congratulations to you, Sheriff Garrett, and for putting on a great program there. Got La Hora Social Bienestar coming up this week, GPI check-in with a consultant. And so the hits just keep coming. So that's about all I've got. I'm going to kick it over to you, Tanya.
Good morning, Vice Chair Willie and Commissioners. This time of year is really special, because I'm able to honor Years of Service awards of staff. And so I do want to share the volume of years of service that were recognized this year also, to ensure that the board, employees see that the board recognizes staff's contributions. The chair also had signed all the signatures. So for five-year awards, there were 117 staff recognized, 10-year, 40, 15, 38, 20-year, 47, 25-year, 14, and 30 years of service, five. So, well, amazing. Yes. So we have long-tenured staff, and we have new members in Washington County. And so it's great to celebrate these important milestones and their continued contributions to Washington County. I do want to highlight this weekend's and our emergency management efforts, our emergency management staff, and all of our partner organizations over the last several days, as our region entered a period of fire-prone weather. Dry and windy conditions prompted the National Weather Service to issue a red flag warning from Friday morning to Saturday night. And our partners at PGE, Portland General Electric, moved forward with their plans to shut off 10,000 to 15,000 of their customers in Washington County. There were over 30,000 region-wide that were impacted. These public safety power shut-offs were first plans, were the first planned such outages on this scale that our region has seen, in order to mitigate the likelihood of a catastrophic fire. So this was the first time we've experienced this outage. This is pretty common in California and other communities due to fire conditions. During a similar period of dry and windy weather in 2020, many of us remember the rapid growth of wildfire in the region, including here in Washington County, where we had the power line fire in the Chilomel Mountain and Bald Peak Fire. Each of these fires involved evacuation of residents to the tune of over 1,000 people. I think, I think I was actually just two weeks on the job when that occurred, and the board had two emergency declarations happening simultaneously. Thankfully, last week's critical fire weather and power shutdowns did not result in extensive wildfire and evacuations. As the saying goes, nothing happens by accident. Our Emergency Operations Center, our EOC, activated ahead of the oncoming fire weather and stayed in operation for about three and a half days. The EOC focused on monitoring the evolving situation, preparing for wildfire evacuations, coordinating mass care for anyone affected by the power outages, and providing prevention, preparedness, and response guidance to the public. Working in coordination with our partner agencies, I do want to share a few highlights and data from this last weekend. We sent four wireless emergency alerts to about 16,200 residents in the public safety power-off areas in support of PGE's fire prevention operations there. These were what are called reverse 911 calls and texts targeted to the affected areas. We were prepared to activate two reception centers and three shelters to quickly begin attempting evacuees from potential wildfires. We supported three cooling and charging stations in cooperation with the Washington County Library Services. These were the North Plains, Forest Grove, and Banks libraries. We reached out before the power was shut off to over 100 individuals who were dependent on medical devices to ensure they had a plan for recharging their equipment and for relocating temporarily to a place that had reliable power. In one case, when an individual was not reachable by phone, the EOC asked that the Washington County Sheriff's Office conduct a welfare check when a person of concern did not answer their phone. Turns out, the individual had just relocated with their grandchildren and grandkids in a powered RV parked outside her home, so she couldn't hear the phone. However, we do know that she was safe. Although there were small brush fires that occurred here and there, including one near Hague Lake that damaged some of the park grounds, our partners in fire and rescue did a fantastic job of suppressing each fire that did occur. We are thankful to them, the Sheriff's Office, and to all other response partners, and to the public in general for helping keep our community safe. There have also been questions regarding encampments. As the critical fire weather took shape, staff from the county's multidisciplinary encampment management program made contact with known encampments to ensure there was good situational awareness and supply of water within those encampments. So I just want to extend huge kudos to all who were involved in response, and really for reflecting on what we learned in 2020 and applying that to this last weekend. As I had advised the board, we were ready to also open up our fairgrounds in case we would have had to evacuate animals. So this is just a testament to our staff and being a learning organization, and frankly, a learning community in service to all of our community members. On Friday, Greg Munn, Aaron Calvert, and I held a public safety and justice planning meeting with all of our department directors. And we will be drafting an RFP to really look at our service gaps and needs and benchmark comparables, so that we can not only plan for our finances today, but start to look ahead. Because as your board is aware, we do have significant operational needs and also capital needs affecting our public safety and justice department. I will be attending the ICMA conference in Ohio on Friday through Wednesday. Aaron Calvert will be in my place at next Tuesday's board meeting, and will also be acting county administrator. Commissioner Fai, in response to the question on auditor and work plan and behavioral health, I have just sent Christine, our new incoming auditor, a quick message via Teams. As far as a process, the auditor typically meets with department directors, and also the county administration office and board members to get input on what audits should be considered in this next work plan, and then presents that work plan to your board for any final input. So I did already share that feedback with Christine. But please know, as she takes office, that work plan will be before your board. And that concludes my update.
Great. That's a good, that's a great report on the wind and concerns of this weekend. As sitting in for Chair Harrington, we had two phone calls a day. I don't know, I, there was 200 people, I think, on this. I don't know if you were on that or not, Tanya. But I just thought PGE and our EOC, John Wheeler, just did a great job of keeping us up to date. My son's area was one of the ones that they shut the electricity off. So I was able to keep them kind of up to speed a little bit as to expectations, so that they could plan to the weekend and things like that. But yeah, they did a great job. It was very good.
Yeah. And if I could, and oh, go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
No, I, Jerry, this is to Tanya anyway, you know, I didn't mean to interrupt her flow. But anyone who's watching, the market today knows it's down about 900 points. And we know that we've got a report yesterday about 8.3% inflation. And I know that she is committed, as well as Greg Munn, to taking a look at what finances are going to do in the future. As part of what he made in his presentation, just not maybe, what, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, whenever it was, was some forecasting. And I, for one, would appreciate understanding if this inflation rate stays at 8.3%. You know, we're looking at a significant hit in terms of dollars available for services. So I'm hoping that maybe he might, from time to time, give us some update on what he sees or what he's thinking about, instead of walking into a budget document where we're told, you know, here's what, here's what it is. I'd like to be able to forecast, like most boat businesses do, you know, we're looking ahead, trying to say, okay, it's somewhat voodoo, but it's not entirely. You can kind of see what's happening. So that was, that's my request.
Commissioner Rogers, that is coming. I don't have my rolling agendas to give you the exact date of when we have that schedule. But as the commission had seen Greg's model, at least just visually, his model that he plans to use, we do plan on having increased financial updates, given just the market and conditions, and also given the sheer needs, operational and capital pressures that we have on our budget. So more to come on that.
Thank you, Tanya. I'd say the same thing to Clean Water Services, because the rates are going to be impacted. Obviously, your costs are not going to be the same, whether it be chemicals, capital improvement program, or costs for your employees. So it'd be nice to understand, Jack, what's happening in terms of what you're forecasting for your budget needs. Again, well ahead of seeing the budget.
Now that Commissioner Rogers will incorporate that in our regular financial updates.
Thank you.
Yeah, Roy, that was, that was a great question. I just wish you hadn't referred to the market. Okay, I intentionally do not pay attention to the market. So thank you very much for that upgrade.
You're going to get, you're going to need to get another job, Jerry.
I know.
Going south.
Yeah, I got a night shift. I think I can still do. Yes, Tanya.
So I was just going to add on emergency management. We are going to be working with John Wheeler and team on tabletop planning exercises. As the board may, may know or may recall, those were put on hold, because emergency management was really focused on COVID and COVID response. As we are now living with COVID, we, this last week's event really highlights that need for all of us to ensure that we understand our emergency management structure and practices, given the more frequent events that we are experiencing.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya. Tom?
Good morning. I have, again, a litigation update. The Schwartz case, which you all know is, is the tobacco litigation. I mentioned John Mansfield argued that on August 29th, we're still waiting for a decision from the judge. I will, of course, tell you when, soon as we get one, it should be coming shortly, I would expect. The Ridwell matter, the state case, as you remember, the judge dismissed. Ridwell has appealed that, so we'll be in the Court of Appeals on that case. The federal case, I'm arguing tomorrow with a motion to dismiss in front of Judge Mossman, which we were, we're actually arguing findings and recommendations from the magistrate. So I'll report whatever Judge Mossman does. There is some activity in elections, which you should be aware of. There is, there is, there was a request some time ago for our database records from our election division. And we objected with the support of the Secretary of State. And that objection has been appealed. So there's a hearing going forward on September 20th, which is next Tuesday. Jason Bush is handling that in conjunction with the state attorney general. The state is very interested in whether or not those records get released and how they get released. The vendor is, of course, concerned about proprietary software information as well. Staying with elections, you may be aware that the county has received numerous requests to retain its ballots from the 2020 election. You've all gotten, I think, four or five letters. This, this, we've learned that this is a statewide effort. Almost every county in the state, as far as I know, has received them. And then I read Sunday in the Washington Post, it's actually a national effort. And that some people think it's an attempt to disrupt the election by distracting election workers. I want to assure you that our election staff is incredibly competent and doing a great job, and it's not going to distract them at all, that they are, they are keen and working on their, doing their work very well. So in case you saw that story and were concerned, I don't have any concerns about our staff and the work they're doing. We are working on preserving the records appropriately. I will be out on vacation next week. I will be in Hawaii. I won't be doing anything as smart as Tanya, but I'll be in a much nicer place. There, apparently Hawaii has not got internet yet, so I'll not be able to call in.
Courtney.
Brad Anderson is actually testifying in the election matter, as he negotiated the contract with the vendor. So Courtney Dupries and our other deputy county counsel will be here to support you on next Tuesday. So thank you.
All right. Enjoy your time there. Thank you.
Jerry?
Yes, Roy.
I have a question to Tom, and I don't know if you've seen this. We just received at home a flyer from a company called Recycle Plus. And it's talking about check with us on recyclables. And they're showing pictures of various things that can be recycled. I know we just went through this whole thing with another vendor. Are you aware of this? Or is this something new?
Commissioner Rogers, Recycle Plus is the name of the county's program that's being run through our haulers. So is, it could be that you're getting a solicitation from one of our haulers.
Okay, because it just talks about, I wish they would, maybe a good thing for them and for our staff would be to say, why don't we say this part of our program? I thought, what is this? Is this another vendor popping up? It's not clear about what it is. Oh, it's both in English and Spanish. It says, call if you need service. So interesting. Okay. Anyway, you know about it.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you. Roy, who's your, who's your hauler down there?
Pride.
Thank you. I can check with Pride. Oh, it came, it came from us. In case you couldn't hear that, that's our program. Those are our materials.
Doesn't say that at all, but that'd be good to put on there, probably.
So Commissioner Rogers, you should sign up immediately.
I'm already, I think, signed.
Excellent.
Nafisa, do you have something?
Yeah, you mentioned the election, Tom, and this is a question for Tanya. I remember last May election, our website went down. So I think we might want to put out information about, that's not going to happen again. I know we did that when it happened, but just this election, we need to communicate.
Thank you for that question and comment, Commissioner Fai. Actually, on September 27th, we will be having a very brief elections update for your board, because we do have a new elections manager. So it will be a great opportunity to introduce our elections manager to the community and to just really reassure our community of elections integrity. To the point of the website, I would like to be able to 100% guarantee that we will never have an issue with our website again. However, I feel uncomfortable making that guarantee. And so that's why we need to ensure that we have redundant systems in place. And so the information being held with the state and also the county helps build that redundancy in place, puts that in place, excuse me. After the website did go down last year, our staff did an after-action review to really talk through what would happen if that would occur, so that we can be very quick on our feet of putting some notice in place, so that our community does have on-time, on-demand election results. And we worked with the state on that process as well.
Great. Okay. Jack, I think we, I think we finally got back to you. So.
All right.
Good morning.
Clean Water Services. Good morning, Vice Chair Willie. Good morning, Commissioners. I have quite a few updates for you this morning. And starting with the public safety power shut-off that is on everyone's mind over the weekend. And I want to first comment the great work that was done by the county's emergency management, which really coordinated across the region with all the emergency managers, including Clean Water Services, about the latest and the greatest information, so all agencies can prepare. Now, while the county was working on taking care of the community from a cooling center, all of that aspect, Clean Water Services role is maintaining the critical infrastructure for the community, so the operations is not interrupted during human access. Clean Water Services' role is maintaining the critical infrastructure for the community. So the operations is not interrupted during human like that. Unfortunately, um, the power shut off, did not impact any of the treatment class. So our treatment class maintained power out of the treatment plan. Although we did have three pump stations in the commune system that was impacted by the power outage. However, we have very, very sufficient um, emergency operation plan with, with generators providing power. Automatically kicks in after the power outage into the pump stations. So the operation was not interrupted at all. And we have three pump stations impacted in the gas tank bank area and uh, for different hours and uh. Each one of them were, all of them were actually.
Walsh constructing is the builder. It's looking great. Framing is done, roof is done, so. Lot of work going on, on that. And last, but not the least, on our project list, fifty-four units in Aloha, on incorporate is called Aloha Inn. We're going through a community process to rename that as we speak. Uh, as with all, this was an old hotel that we acquired. And as with all rehabilitation, there's always surprises. Uh, we came to your board last week for. Funds to complete. There was some plumbing. There was a leak, uh, flood. Brief, but there was a flooding there that cost a lot of money. Oh, we try, we use the facility as a shelter. While we work on the full rehab and the flooding obviously didn't help, but. When the walls came out, there was a lot of surprises. Uh, the plumbing is also, the decision was made to just replace the whole thing. And so this building, when it's done, will serve the community for many, many years. So we, we, um, and this will be. All permanent supportive housing. So there'll be a combination of wraparound services, rental assistance. For some of the neediest of our fellow citizens. So. This, this is something we are very excited about, just because it touches. Many, many departments. When the flood happens, the fire service was there, the sheriff's office was there, the bomb squad from Poland was there. And then obviously with homelessness, we work very closely with health and human services and outside management. I mean, it's touching so many areas, but this is housing that is dedicated for uh. Very vulnerable people in our community.
So that was a water issue that was kind of an immediate water issue, not a um, continuation.
No.
Which mold would be a part of that. So we didn't incorporate any mold issues.
No, there would, yeah, there was, actually it wasn't moldy at all. It was just flooding. The flooding, and then when we told the walls, realized the pipe, the condition of the pipes required. More attention than we had scheduled, so. We on top of it is due to be completed before the end of the year, this year, twenty twenty-two, and there'll be folks leaving there. Hopefully by the end of the year. So one other thing we're excited about. So on a final note, we have thirteen million left of the hundred and sixteen million. And we have released a notice of funding available to developers. We have seen a lot of interest and that notice is due October twenty-first. So. We'll be coming back to your board for selection of worthy developers. And uh, when the Metro bond was issued, the six hundred and fifty-two point eight million. Ten percent was set aside for loan acquisition according to Metro for regionally significant sites. In Washington County, our share of that will be about twelve point nine million. Uh, we've had a tough go finding sites that are available. I mean, the sites we have. We like, but they are not available for sale. So, but. That would also be additional investment in the county, that twelve point nine of site acquisition. So our team is working closely with Metro to ensure that Washington County gets its share of that, those, that funding to acquire a significant site. Beaverton was successful with a site near El Monica. So they work with uh, Metro on that.
I would imagine sites along light rail are more expensive and more difficult to find. So the one at El Monica would be a great find.
Yes.
Great location.
Yeah, sites are just very spending in this county. So with that, I've ended the Metro bond piece of our presentation. If there's questions, so take them.
Um, I can, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I think this is a bit of logistics and reflection to a tour Commissioner Willie and I did with Josh Kryt's Willow Creek. And one of the site manager, the landlord, is that the correct term? Site manager?
Yeah.
Or, yeah. The building manager was explaining some of the. Application process and how people get in. And one of the things she mentioned was. You know, you have to be a low income certain percentage. But then if you get promotion or you keep making more money, you don't get priced out and forced to move out. Is that true, same uh, process for these new affordable housing that we're gonna be?
Yes, that's correct. Yes. Once you're eligible, I move in, you are, you are in. Obviously, if you. Win the lottery or something, we'll try, we'll find ways to encourage you to find alternative housing, but yeah, once you're eligible, I move in, you are fine.
And is that same, uh, is that true for section eight voucher holders?
What section eight voucher holders, uh, they have to remain eligible for that voucher. Throughout the life, yes. Their income increases, we do an adjustment, so their share of the rent goes up slightly.
So section eight voucher holders could be priced out, like they could be asked to move out if they make more money? Is that?
No, they'll be asked to be a little more.
A lot more?
Yes. So rule of thumb, well, no, I shouldn't say rule of thumb, but let's say the rent is twelve hundred and the tenant portion is three hundred. And we, the housing authorities pay nine hundred of that rent and the tenant's income goes up. Number, but let's say their, the income goes up, maybe their portion could go from three hundred to four or five hundred, depending on the, the math. But they'll not be asked to leave, no.
That was a really. Good thing to hear, because that wasn't a process when we, low income housing. If you make more money, then obviously you need to make space for somebody who could utilize that space. So it's a really good thing that people aren't being forced out to move out because now they're making money. So I, I, I appreciated learning that. And, and I appreciate everybody. Sounds like it's a new addition in Oregon that, uh, housing advocates advocated. So my gratitude to them.
Yeah. What, so for developments financed with the low income housing tax credit, which is managed, it's not by HUD, but by the Internal Revenue Service. The thinking going in was, we want to help working poor people. So, yeah, you don't, you're not asked to leave at all.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are you good?
Yeah, one question, one comment and then one question. The, the comment I'm really reluctant to make, but I'll say it anyway. And the reason I'm reluctant is that. Comey's head just keeps getting bigger all the time when I do this sort of thing, but. He and his, he and his staff are just rock stars. I mean, this is complicated stuff. It really is. It takes a variety of financing tasks. People who really have very detailed types of experiences, everything from building to financing to, to put these together. So I, I, I compliment you. My, my question is this, is that I, I understand that these have a finite period uh, for affordable housing. I understand that the only reason we can do these things is federal tax, state tax credits. They're really not doable for most developments without them. In the future. And I know I'm asking you to probably forecast out, well, I know I am, beyond everyone on this calls probably uh, tenure. What clawbacks do we have to make certain that some future board forty years or fifty years from now? Is not going to be either one dealing with a nonprofit that doesn't exist anymore, built these. Uh, that, that somehow they can stay in inventory to developers who long gone, be long gone and. And, and in financial centers are gone, uh, and to a county who may be stretched for funds who know what they'll do in those days. How, how, how is this sustainable? I missed a big program, a lot of money.
Yes, uh, well, that's a, not an easy question, but I have to say this, um. So you heard about the Wood Springs in Tiger. When that was built in nineteen ninety-two, the affordability period was thirty years. It has been changed now to sixty years of affordability. And that is monitored by the state, Oregon Housing and Community Services. So in terms of long-term sustainability, should we have a nonprofit or developer that wants to exit? There are mechanisms where they could sell or assign their interest to another entity. So. It could be a housing authority that steps up and acquires these properties, or it could be nonprofits, but. There have been cases where nonprofits have exited some of these partnerships and assigned their interest to other more stable nonprofits. Or some, in the case of the Wood Spring, it was a for-profit development company that bought it after the thirty years. So the other part of your question about sustainability is because our rents are low compared to market. Generally, we struggle with funding to maintain. These buildings over time. So some of what the housing authority did recently was resyndicate. Meaning we went back to the banks and lenders and equity investors. That was a hundred and fifty million transaction we presented to your board a while ago. And so we resyndicated those and the upgrades are happening as we speak. And we come into your board again for phase two of that piece. So that's what's going on.
Thank you, Comey. I, I, I understood about the refinancing. When you and I talked, I don't think bored to wear this on your insurance needs, you were way under sure, we talked about that. Chatted about the inability, unless federal funds continue to flow. To, to sustain this program. And so I'm hoping as we look, uh. Tanya and her able staff and Greg Munn, as they start looking at sustainability, uh, that we look at this as well. To me, in the future. We, we need to understand that these kinds of programs are necessary and that if we don't have financing allocated. You can't continue to provide products. And I know you've got inventory, some in Tiger, you know, that I can name and I won't on camera, but. That are not in the best of shape. They need a lot of help. And so I, I don't know where you're going to get those funds, because I mean, we're all. Giddy today about, and I, and we should be about building new stock. But there's a lot of old stock that's going to continue to need to be addressed. And I, I, I'd be curious. To me, that's more what I'm interested in, in is how we sustain this and where, where the operating funds are going to come to what you'd call maintenance. So, uh, anyway, just. Some observations.
Thank you.
Hey. We're ready to move on.
We'll move on to the supportive housing part of this presentation. And Josh, ready?
I'm here. Good morning, Coach Chair Willie and Ford. It's great to be here with you this morning. I'm, I'm Josh Kreitsch, Assistant Director of the Housing Department. Excited to be able to frame up this SHS Supportive Housing Services Measure, uh, Year One. Uh, so I, I think a theme that I would like to talk a little bit about before I turn it over to the team to get into the details and nitty gritty. It's just the theme of leadership, because I think we, we, if we look back in two thousand twenty, we're just starting the pandemic. And this came on as a measure across Washington County and the tri-county area. And the voters stepped up. They approved this because they want to see us fight back against chronic homelessness and bring dignity to the, the community members. Who have the least in Washington County and the metro area. So first, it's the leadership of the voters. And I would say, we came, Comey and I came to your board in January of twenty twenty-one, and I remember this very distinctly, so just last year. And at that time, we knew the money was coming. We knew the measure was passed, but we had no staffing. We had no funding yet, and we came to your board and your board showed the leadership to give us an interphone, interfund loan and trusted. Our process and our vision for setting up this program as far as getting staffing on board and getting this money out into the community. And that really helped kickstart us. So you're going to hear some really great stuff today. And so I want to thank your board for the leadership. That you demonstrated in helping us start this program and giving us that, um, just continued leadership. It's, it's great to see Jack sing there and Tanya sing there, and we couldn't have done any of this without county administration and finance supporting us. Uh, and, and just helping us think through, how can we get this thing up and running before all this money comes our way? So again, just continued leadership in our county administrative and finance office and great partnerships throughout the county. We, we have spent so much time with Health and Human Services from Marnie to Mira to her staff. And the Office of Community Development and Legal, who helped us really get the, all of our different IGAs in place. So there's just been so much leadership. And, and you know, I'll wrap up my part here and turn it over to the team here shortly, but you know, now our team here in Washington County and the Housing Department. And all the community partners, which you're going to hear so much cool stuff today, they've demonstrated so much leadership in getting this program stood up. So we, you're going to hear a lot about how we built up this system of care, how many community-based partners have come on board. The work we're doing around standardization and equitable contract and the types of training and technical assistance that we're putting out there. Uh, you, you'll, you'll also hear that, you know, there were some adjustments in some of the goals, but I also think that is just the nature of the extreme. Amount of work that had to be done to build a system that was five million. And now all of a sudden, we have seventy million dollars in the system. So a lot of building and a lot of work has been put in. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the team who's going to just, I think, you know, blow your socks off with some really, really good stuff today. So I'm going to turn it over to Janine. I think she has, uh, the next slide, please.
Good morning, Board. I'm Janine Smith, Housing Justice Coordinator with Supportive Housing Services. And the Office of Equity, Inclusion and Community Engagement. So let me borrow your eyes and ears while I tell you a story about Yessenia. She is a community partner with Family Promise of Greater Washington County. She recalled a time and stated. One of our winter shelter participants was an expectant single mother struggling with her mental health. This was clearly a mama who was in need of assistance. Assessing the participant, Yessenia assembled a care team like the Justice League. She connected the participant with prenatal care, ongoing mental health support and postnatal care for. Her duration of her time in the shelter. Coordination between providers while centering participants. Is a best practice method that incorporates services tailored to the participant's assessed needs. The coordination and care between staff and providers allowed the struggling mom-to-be to maintain stable housing. Next slide, please.
Sorry, I was mute. Hi, my name's Alex Devon. I'm the Services Network Administrator for Washington County, taking the place of Ally, who's on a well-needed vacation. So as Josh had said, we had done a lot of really great work this year. Um, and one of the great things we have done was the launch of the Housing Case Management Services Program. Say it's our, our flagship program or our skeleton, uh, program for this whole system of care. Um, and essentially this program is focused on, uh, the highest acuity, highest need households in the system. Folks that have been in a form of housing stability for over twelve months have disabilities, extremely low income, so lots of barriers to overcome. And we moved forward with the program with a twenty to one case management ratio that provided all the wraparound supports these households' needs and. Got in a whole lot of organizations that are new to this work and trained them up and started enrolling in. Every single one of these households that's getting enrolled in this program gets a regional long-term rental assistance, which we call Arla. Voucher, which ensures basically that they only have to pay twenty-eight point five percent of their income towards rent. So if they have no income. Uh, they pay no rent in the beginning, but then they have that intensive case management services to help them increase their income. As well as the wraparound supports and things they need to, you know, live stable, live a life. Um, and so this first year, uh, we shot for the stars and we hit the moon. Originally, we thought we would do three, uh, five hundred place. We got three hundred and five, but we had well over five hundred households enrolled by the end of the year. So. Folks are still getting placed. They were getting placed through July and through August and probably folks getting placed today, honestly, our, our, our team over at the Housing Authority is uh. Out there inspecting units left and right all the time. So, you know, just in this first year, we were able to get three hundred and five. Really needy households into affordable, uh, housing units of their choice. Next slide. into affordable, uh, housing units of their choice. Next slide, please. So we were using this trajectory, this speed, this traction we're doing. And we're going right into year two with it. And part of what we're doing in year two is adding the next layer of programming. And that is really the, the, the population B is defined by Metro, or I would just say everyone else. Folks that are in a housing crisis, folks that are newly homeless, a lot of transitional age youth. Um, and so that rapid rehousing program got contracted out in July. Um, and so our partners are either hiring up or starting to place folks to that program. And that is a medium-term program. Essentially, we provide rental assistance from anywhere from three to twenty-four months, depending on the household's needs. Twenty-four months run up and the household still needs more, we can transfer them over to the Arla program to ensure that nobody that gets placed in the housing falls back into homelessness. So we're building a very nimble system, which is not traditional in, 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 uh, rehousing programs and homeless programs in the past. So pretty, pretty, pretty neat how nimble of a system that we're building to really meet the, in unique needs of different households. Um, this year, we also launched the Housing Liaisons Program, that is five housing liaisons that are co-located located at different Health and Human Services walk-in centers like the Hawthorne Center or the DAVS Program, the Disability, Aging and Veteran Services Program. So now we're co-locating these housing specialists at these units so folks come in in a housing crisis. They don't have to go to another place or call another place or talk to another person. They have somebody right there that can, you know, step right and sit down with them, do an assessment and get them connected to the resources they need. And so as I said earlier, we got four hundred households that are currently shopping. That was, this is about a week ago, so it's actually probably more than four hundred households that are shopping since PowerPoint was put together. And our goal, like I said, shoot for the stars and hope to hit the moon, is we're shooting for nine hundred housing placements this year. So, you know, as organizations, our great nonprofits are hiring up, we're training them up and we're enrolling folks as quick as possible. And so next slide, please. As you will see, this growth, this is just a supportive housing placement. So if you look at two thousand twenty-one, you're looking at forty-two housing placements in Washington County. Then you go to last year and you're looking at a little, little bit over three hundred. And next year, we're shooting for five hundred housing placements, not counting the additional four hundred population B medium-term placements. We're looking at adding in, we're currently adding into the system. So tremendous growth. I'd say our, 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 our partners are scrambling, doing new HR policies. There's postings all over the place to hire. We're adding boots on the ground. We're trying to train these folks up as soon as they hire up and give them the support they need. I would also say, kind of on a tail, that we are making sure that our providers are getting adequate funding to hire staff at a livable wage. That was something really important. We put it forward this year was making sure that the people that are serving our community aren't the ones walking in through the front door asking for services in the community. And I will send it back now.
Well, all right. Step into Kanita Atkins' world with me for story number two. Um, Kanita struggled with addiction for years. This mighty champion got clean and sober and moved into tran- transitional housing with her husband and children. Kanita was approved for permanent housing thanks to tax money raised from Metro's, um, homeless service measure passed by voters in twenty twenty. Kanita said, "It's great to wake up in our own house and know it's just you and you don't have to worry about anyone else or what they are going through, to know that you're okay and you're gonna be okay." Not only has she been clean and sober for years, four to be exact, um, this awesome mama is working a part-time job and going to school. She only has to pay twenty-seven percent of the rent and the utilities, which she has expressed as a tremendous help. As a reminder, addiction is a wild ride, um, recovery is a journey, but no matter the circumstances, we are all human at the end of the day, including individuals who dwell in the shadows of addiction. Kanita wants others struggling with addiction to know that there is light on the other side, and Kanita is a testament to that. Congratulations to her, her family unit. Next slide, please.
Good morning, Board. Uh, for the record, my name is Jess Larson. I use she and her pronouns. And I'm your Supportive Housing Services Program Manager here with the team today, helping provide this fantastic year in review. So my role today is to give you an update on our access programs. We think of these as our front door to the system and how we help reach people where they're at and get them on their journey to stable housing. And so first, um, I have a quick review of our shelter programs. Um, as you will recall, we set a goal to achieve one hundred new year-round shelter beds in Washington County. Before we had this funding available to us in Washington County, we actually had nowhere to send, um, individuals who were, um, sorry, we only had year-round shelters for families and youth. And in fact, we have about forty-seven year-round shelters for family and youth, but no year-round shelters for adults or couples. And so the addition of these a hundred year-round shelter beds made all the difference for those um, individuals or couples who had no other shelter option. So these shelter, um, beds were made possible through our partnerships with Greater Good Northwest and Project Turnkey um, at the Hillsborough Bridge Shelter and also our partnership with Central Cultural and their Casa Amparo um, in Forest Grove, um, another project turnkey. We also were able to work with just compassion in Tigerd and expand their winter-only shelter capacity and turn that into year-round congregate shelter capacity. So this is how we added and met our goal for one hundred new year-round shelter beds. In year two, we're already working to expand and meet our next year's goal. Um, we're working with a partnership with Twelton, uh, sorry, Family Promise of Twelton Valley to add forty bridge shelter beds for families and individuals down in Tigerd. Um, we are also getting ready to open our first alternative shelter, a Pod Village in partnership with the City of Hillsborough and, um, Open Door. We'll be opening, we hope later this month for, um, with thirty pods for up to forty people. And then once again, we will be launching our winter shelter system, um, with a hundred and fifty-five additional winter beds over the course of the winter. We hope to also extant, extend that winter shelter season, um, as long as six months if possible. And then last, in year two, the expansion includes the addition of a capital fund we've discussed with you before. We're about to release that funding opportunity to our partners who are, um, citing and preparing future permanent shelter sites. You're fully aware of the City of Beaverton and the City of Hillsborough's recent acquisitions and their current plans underway to develop permanent shelters. Um, we have some others and in partnership with other community organizations. So we're gonna be putting out a capital fund to help support the, the costs of those redevelopment projects. Next slide, please. So this slide is a quick view of that in map form, everything I just discussed. Um, we have our, um, current shelters in green, um, two of them being, um, those con-, uh, sorry, non-congregate kind of motel-based style bridge shelters and one being that congregate shelter program down in Tigerd. We have winter shelter sites coming on board, partnering with, um, our colleagues in the website comments to open the Cloverleaf again and, um, City of Beaverton to open their winter shelter location along with a bunch of dispersed, um, motel-based shelter options for the winter season. And then we have future shelter sites underway in Hillsborough, Tigerd and Beaverton. Next slide, please. And this is a, a view of that capacity expansion over time. Um, I'll give you a second to kind of adjust your eyes or talk you through this slide. So the, um, blue kind of dashed, um, part of the bar chart demonstrates our winter shelter capacity. And as you can see, before these regional funds, we were very limited in our shelter capacity to only be able to offer, um, much of our shelter for four months a year. Um, we had some year-round shelter, um, but that, again, that was about forty-seven, um, beds for families and youth only. In, in the first year, we added one hundred beds. So you can see in the dark blue and green, those signify the bridge shelter is in the dark blue section and then the green shelter section is in the, um, it represents the congregate shelter capacity. Um, here in the coming year, right now, we're getting ready to add our alternative shelter. So we're adding a new color of a new shelter type, a shelter model. Um, and then we're planning ahead for year, um, three, when we hope to see some, much of that new shelter, um, planning come online. And as we grow that year-round capacity, we can decrease our winter-only shelter capacity because we'll be, we're able to serve our community year-round with these permanent shelter sites. So that's a quick overview of our shelter programs this past year and, uh, up and coming or right now underway. Um, and then the next slide begins, um, just a quick overview of a new program we've launched thanks to this voter-approved resource. Um, we were able to, um, really strengthen, stabilize and expand our outreach system using SHS funding. So this just got underway with this, um, program year. Um, it had been started thanks to one-time ARPA funding that was, um, uh, sent through our partners at Community Action, but that funding was expiring. And so we worked in partnership to stabilize, stabilize those teams of outreach workers and strengthen them. So now each of the eight organizations working in partnership with us to provide this outreach system, as you can see represented in the map, they each have a team of two. So we have sixteen outreach workers. And, um, six of the organizations work in geographic areas, you can see described on this map. And so they coordinate across geographic areas. They can respond and work in partnership with emergency response or the Enchantment Management Program, or even community members to go and see folks where they are at, unsheltered and engage in, uh, long, uh, engage in building relationships and working to connect them to housing and shelter programs as quickly as possible. Um, so again, our frontline service providers out there. And then we have two organizations that are population-specific, so they work across the county and in coordination with those other seven, uh, sorry, six organizations. Um, and that is our youth partner, Home Plate, um, working to respond to the needs of unsheltered youth anywhere in urbanized Washington County. And then, um, ERCO, um, working to provide services to immigrants and refugees um, anywhere in Washington, in urbanized Washington County in partnership with those outreach providers. So, um, that's a quick overview of our outreach program, and I'll pass the baton back to Janine for another story. I think we've missed a slide, um, so maybe we'll pass it to, uh, Alex to carry on.
Hey, we're nimble around here. We can adjust, no problem. So thank you, everyone, for, you know, Jess and Janine talking about all the great work we're doing. So as we're working our way into year two, we have a whole bunch of new pilots that we're launching and they're currently underway. Um, I talked about the Housing Liaison Pilot, which is currently underway and we're looking at expanding it into, uh, different aspects of the judicial system. So those are early conversations are happening and we're really excited about that. Um, another thing that we're, we're, is underway, we're processing launching is our lived experience workforce pilot. And so this really gives folks that have worked their way through the housing response system, have histories of homelessness, the opportunity to get paid training, a paid internship, and then the opportunity to become a case manager in the system. So as we continue to increase the need for new boots on the ground and case managers to do this work, you know, we've learned in, you know, many, many years, folks have learned that, uh, that some of the greatest case managers are ones that have gone through it, lived through it, come out through the other side, and they can show the best level of empathy and support. So we're working two cohorts this first year of fifteen, uh, folks and see how it goes. And hopefully it'll end up being a four cohort a year, uh, program where we can, uh, give paid training and internships to these folks that want to give back to the system that helped them get housed. So really, really exciting. I'm really, I'm really can't wait to see the outcome of this one. Um, also the PSH integration with affordable housing, you know, a lot of these affordable housing buildings come up. They, they might have initially thought that this wasn't gonna have any permanent supportive housing. Um, and then they see that a lot of folks that are permanent supportive housing households actually move in and they might need that additional support. And so they have the opportunity to, um, apply for some additional funding and then dedicate those units as permanent supportive housing units in the future. And so that's already currently going underway with the View Finder, um, where they have, they saw a large influx of people that needed additional needs and they reached out and stepping in or stepping in and creating some additional programming them there. So that is ongoing, that is rolling RFI and it's really exciting and building out the system. Um, also underway is Welcome Home Kits, uh, so trying to build out a nice volunteer network so that when folks move in, they get a Welcome Home Kit, they get a basket, they get the opportunity to turn an apartment into a home. Um, you know, why are you gonna stay in your house if it's just four walls and a bed? Um, so these are really good opportunities for Welcome Home Kits and it is also a really good opportunity at the community involved in giving back. Uh, the community is always asking for ways to help and this is a really solid, easy way that can, community can step up and help and give back in a really meaningful way. So those are just a few of the expansions that we're working on pushing out this year. Uh, next slide, please, and this is my last one, um, is just the numbers, right? Like, a year and a half ago, there was four or five providers running on a shoestring budget, trying to get this work done in Washington County, not very much infrastructure at all. And now we have twenty-two partners, most of them have multiple contracts, whether it's shelter, whether it's Housing Case Management Services, Housing Liaisons, Rapid Rehousing Outreach. Um, and the, the, the provider network is growing, they're getting stronger, they're getting more confident, we're getting better outcomes. Um, everybody's learning together. I like to say we're, we're building the ship as we're sailing it. Um, and that's exactly what we're doing right here. And, you know, we could not do this work without this great provider network. I mean, they're, they're, we have a, a flavor of provider for every flavor of person. And, and that is really what we need if we want to be successful doing this work. Um, also, we're, you know, we're, we're training them all, we're onboarding them all. We're, we're, we're staying really accountable and collaborative with everybody and really trying to make this a, a really concise system where we're all, you know, we're all in this together, like a boat, like the boat we're building. And I'm gonna hand it over to Janine now.
Well, okay, switching gears or shifting gears, um, for a moment, from, uh, storytelling to, uh, equity analysis. Can you, next slide? Thank you. Um, as we speak about equity data, we must first, um, highlight that establishing data is a multi-year display of past and present comparison, which takes time for newly implemented data sets. Um, our findings in year one indicates that the households served, um, within Washington, um, within the SHS program are proportionate to the populations in need and demonstrates, um, proportionality generally in who is reaching out for services and who is being served. Um, our data tells us that our culturally-specific organizations are serving more households of color than our organizations, which has been, um, an intentional tactic as we know communities of color are disproportionately underserved. Um, we found that our partners need data quality, um, technical assistance, uh, to ensure, um, data quality control. Organizations collect information such as race and ethnicity, utilizing different data sets, which creates inconsistent, inconsistency, inaccuracies in data outcomes. Um, it's important to utilize the same data sets when collecting and reporting on race and ethnicity for consistency, which brings us to year two, um, where we have noticed improvements in our program. SHS utilizes both HUD and RealB processes to collect demographic information to help ensure equitable access and services that help create effective outcomes. Um, although it is required in some instances, traditional standards of collecting demographic data around race and ethnicity does not detail which groups have the highest level of need. Um, which might be the most problematic data collecting standards, um, is race and ethnicity defaults into white when there is an uncategor- uncategorized community such as, um, uh, Middle Eastern. Because of this, participants are more likely, um, to not answer race and ethnicity questions, which impacts outcomes. Um, so using RealD data collection standards, um, were developed to identify communities most impacted by housing inequities, um, in addition to assessing how racism, um, disableism and barriers around language access continue to manifest disproportionate outcomes. Nonetheless, um, we want to get better in over-serving communities of color to deliberately disrupt disproportionate gaps, um, that have historically caused undue generational harm. Um, in order to do this, um, we have and continue to expand the number of, um, incapacity for culturally-specific organizations and expanded housing programs that serve more households of color. Next slide, please. Um, this is an overview of how we utilize disaggregated data to create, um, analysis of ongoing program evaluations, adjusting programs as we go and using baseline data sets to understand our community need. Um, as we continue to develop, analyze and utilize data, um, such as this, it would allow us to tailor more of our programs to over-serve communities of color who experience the most disproportionate outcomes while still providing adequate services to other communities in need. Next slide.
Okay, thank you, Janine. Um, uh, back to me for a quick review of- Okay, thank you, Janine. Back to me for a quick review of our financials in year one. So let me walk you through these, these quick charts here for you. So in the first year, we collected or we expended rather just about twenty thousand, twenty million of these new SHS program dollars. We budgeted for thirty-eight million and the difference there really represents a lot of what Alex was describing. It takes time for our partners to hire and train and get their staff up and running. And that was a part of the reason for adjusting our goals midway through. We realized when our first housing placement happened in December that it had taken us about six months to get the system in place to start spending these resources. And that's reflected here in our actuals for the first program year. Nonetheless, we are fully underway and we have a robust budget plan for this current fiscal year. We budgeted for the estimated fifty million dollars, which was an early estimate in annual revenue for this fiscal year. And you can see the different program buckets and how that funding is spread across the various parts of our SHS programming. In the first year, we did receive much more revenue than was expected. We actually collected in the final months of the fiscal year, which aligns with the tax collection season. Much of that revenue and it totaled sixty-three million in year one. So that funding will help us to robustly build up the program expansion that the team has described here today is already getting out the door going into these expanded contracts for year two. And will also help to make some important investments in some one-time capital programming or other kind of reserving that is critical for the long-term health and stability of this program, as well as some of the community infrastructure that's needed to achieve our outcomes. I'm looking, I'm seeing that my internet connection might be unstable. Josh, just jump in if you lose me. So that is what the pie chart describes on the right hand of this slide. We have planned one-time investments in two different reserve accounts for programmatic reserves in case another flood happens in one of our shelters that was coming was describing to help pay for those critical emergency costs when we are providing these critical and emergency services. And then longer-term stability reserves that helps us anticipate potential and significant shifts in the revenue collection. This, this kind of taxing mechanism is likely to be very impacted by economic changes. So we need to be conservative and responsible in how we reserve and plan for programmatic expansion. And then some other exciting one-time capital investments I described earlier, our shelter capital fund, which we're getting ready to roll out. We also anticipate an access center capital fund where people can come immediately any time of day to help get emergency access into the system. And then PSH capital investments also, which we've also been describing. So hopefully this quick overview demonstrates the financial perspective of building our program as we go and plans to robustly invest these resources. Next slide.
Jess, can I ask a question on that slide?
Please, Commissioner.
Yesterday, I, I think I mentioned that I included this in our, my board update this morning, but when I did the interview for the Oregon Health Authority for the three-year certification for the Community Mental Health Program here, yesterday, one of the question that came up was around the supportive housing, this, the housing bond and if there's any money or funding dedicated to mental health or behavioral health services from this, is there any money that gets funneled into that program from this specifically?
So how is our SHS program funds being targeted to behavioral health needs in our community? Is that, is that your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, in a nutshell, yeah.
Mental health, you said?
Mental health, yeah, mental health and behavior, yeah.
Okay, we sometimes use the word behavioral health to be more expansive and include recovery programs. But in either case, I think the answer to your question is generally demonstrated in that orange section of our, of our budget. Those are our housing supports. These are our case managers who are trained in all of the tools of assertive engagement, harm, harm reduction and how to work with people who are experiencing behavioral health symptoms and still work with them towards housing placement and ongoing housing stability. And ultimately provide those wraparound supports to connect them to the Medicaid-funded behavioral health services. So we work very closely in coordination with the Medicaid-funded behavioral health system and our partners in HHS. Alex was earlier describing the housing liaison's role. This is an example of those housing supports described in that orange section embedded inside of some of our Health and Human Services teams that specifically provide Medicaid-funded behavioral health services and making sure that those supports would, between those case managers and our case managers are meeting the needs of our community members who have mental health or behavioral health symptoms and, and ongoing, need ongoing care.
I have a quick question as well. Thank you for your analysis, but I guess I'm trying to parse out what, what are your operating costs and your operating revenues? I see you're doing capacity building. I see you're doing various other reserves and you rightly have described a good philosophy, but if, if you were to strip it down and say, this is what it costs us to operate, this is what our revenues are, what's the general fund subsidy?
What's, I'm sorry, Commissioner, you asked, what is the general fund subsidy?
Are you completely self-sustaining or do you have any sort of counting funds?
Yeah, there are no general funds involved in the SHS program. These are all the taxpayer dollars that have come in to fund all of these operations.
So no general fund? Okay, I'm sorry, Josh, no, no federal, no general fund at all? Is the trajectory, again, you're showing two years and I appreciate that, but is the trajectory that there will be monies, I guess, from various sources equivalent to what you're projecting your expenditures? I, I, I don't know where we're, I don't know what the glide pattern is. I don't know where we're going.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's fair. And what you're seeing in the stability reserves is just a, a conservative, a conservative approach to how we're budgeting for this program. So we've collected about a year's worth of taxes or so. We have, you know, nine more years to go. As the economy goes, so does do the funds, right? If, if the economy goes down and the tax base goes down, then we could see a decrease. If the, if things are going great, we could see an increase. So what we're trying to do is kind of create a baseline set of programs based on our local implementation plan and then have very conservative budgeting, make sure that we have proper operating reserves and really just go down that path. But, you know, we have great folks in both county finance and, and the housing department finance who keep their eyes on this and, and let us know, hey, you know, here's what we see coming. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, Jess, Metro also does a pretty good job of helping us with revenue forecast on a year-to-year basis.
What happens in year eleven, Josh?
Yeah, I, I think the, the big story here is that we want to run such great programs that the voters come, we go back to the voters and renew this program. You know, if we get to, you know, year seven, eight, nine, and there's concerns about the long-term sustainability of the program, I think we'll have to look at all the different types of options, including, you know, just been different measures in LA where they haven't been renewed and trying to find different bridge types of programs. But I think our, our current program is to show success to the voters, get the chronically homeless folks who are really struggling off the streets and demonstrate to the voters, the people who approve this, that this is a worthwhile program, that we're getting demonstratable results down and, you know, go back to them for renewal.
Commissioner Rogers, if I can interject, and I think Director Calvar has some thoughts too. Part of these quarterly updates are to keep the board informed on the progress and the financials of the measure. Right now, there is no general fund support going to our supportive housing services. One of the areas that we are closely monitoring is the liability and insurance of providing a variety of shelter types as we, as we learn how to operate in partnership with our service providers. So more information on that as we move forward. I know Director Calvar and team are closely monitoring that situation. What would happen at year ten at this point if there's not a renewal or replacement of the measure? We do not have general fund support identified at this point in time for continued service delivery. As we look at the community needs, ten years and Commissioner Rogers, I know in financial forecasting, it doesn't feel, it, that doesn't seem like a long time away, but we need to build, build our programs, prove results and then determine what is the best sustainable way to fund these programs and what is the community need moving forward? Once again, I want to stress, there is no general fund support going to supportive housing services, nor do we have future use of general fund identified at this point in time.
Thank you, Tanya. Excellent. I wanted to quickly mention though that there is also a continuum of care, the COC, which is the old program, about four and a half million that has general fund support because HUD requires a twenty-five percent match. So we are talking about SHS today, which has no general fund support, but the continuum of care program does. It's a little, about one point five million of general fund.
Thank you. And, and we're going to go back to Nafisa here just for a second. There's a follow-up to her first question, but I think Roy, the, the point that I'm, I'm hearing is that this is kind of where we stand today, report. I would love to have some more conversations about where are we going and some other baseline things, but I think today we need to focus on, this is an update. And so maybe we, we can compile some questions that you're leaning towards. Certainly, I understand those and I, and I agree with those. But let's, let's stay focused on, this is kind of a where we stand snapshot right now and we can circle back with some additional questions about what it looks like in the future. Nafisa?
Vice Chair Willie, in that light, I can reach out to Jess and have a briefing.
Okay, thank you. All right, go right ahead. Thanks.
Before we move on, Commissioners, it would be helpful if you do send kind of your questions or your requests for future briefings to myself and Director Calvar. These are your quarterly updates and so we want to make sure that the informational material is meeting your needs. So that will help us craft how to best present this information and to meet those needs moving forward.
Yeah, and I think that's an important point, Tanya. So we will certainly do that. Again, eight years disappears pretty quick, quickly. And when we're talking about this kind of a financial program stopping, it's significant. So, yeah, we should be having those conversations, but not in this venue. So go right ahead, Comey. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So we'll just go ahead and wrap it up. Again, I, I think the team did a great job outlining kind of where we're at for year one, year two goals. Really just increasing those supportive housing placements by five hundred, getting a rapid rehousing program up, you know, and, and getting six hundred placements there. Increasing the amount of staffing and our job is to build out a program and get these funds out into the community. So build up our community partner staffing capacity. And then just increase our shelter capacity by seventy-five beds and increase our permanent supportive housing by a hundred. Next slide, please. So we're at the end of the presentation. I know we've had some great questions along the way. So for, on our end, what questions or direction does your board have for the Affordable Housing Bond Program? What questions or direction does the board have for the Supportive Housing Services Program? And then lastly, does your board support the submission of the annual SHS report that's due to Metro? I'll, we'll hang up and, and listen for any questions you might have now. Roy and Nafisa?
I'll jump in, Roy. I don't see you unmuted. But thank you, team. Comey, this is a really great presentation and a good annual report. First question, I don't really have question other than that question, but I'll definitely reach out to your team and have just a bit of a more understanding, the investment that we're making to, not only to the Community Mental Health Program here in Washington County, but also investments that we're making to behavioral health in general in Washington County. I think that's a good, just good information, one pager to have to depict that because there is a concern that mental, you know, we're not investing appropriately in some areas and I think we are from my understanding. So this is a really good report and I don't have any objections of why not to not, not submit. So kudos and keep up. And my goodness, we're, we're, you know, especially in my district, there's a lot of homeless homelessness and homeless encampments. But then you see this report and you really see the the great work the Washington County is putting in to really house people. And I think that's a story that we don't tell often. And, and I think this report did that today, for me at least. And I'm sure some of the constituents can relate that and to say there's, you know, and more importantly, it gives hope that we are working on housing people. We're not just sitting and citing sites that are most advantageous, you know, to infrastructure, but we are finding something and then we're putting the infrastructure together. So I appreciate it. Good report, good work and look forward to more dialogue.
Okay, great. Roy, you have anything?
No, thank you, Jerry, for reminding us. This is a snapshot in time. I've seen many municipalities over my career who always wanted to look forward and they never did. And then they found themselves, as Jerry mentioned, eight years is a blink of an eye. In fact, it's probably seven because you gotta, can't do things the day things are going to expire. So I've asked those questions and I appreciate the responses and that you're taking a look at them at a future point. As far as submission of the annual report, factual, well done. And if you could just add a little music, it would be probably something everybody would watch on TV.
Okay, thanks, Roy. Just two things. One is, Josh, as your slide thirty points out here, we're going from, basically in two years, we're going from zero housing workers to a hundred and ten. We're at thirty-eight, or thirty-eight right now, adding seventy-two in this particular year too. How are you doing on that? I mean, with the employment situation? How, how are you doing on that? And also kind of what's the plan to basically double your staffing in, in basically one year?
Yeah. Well, one thing I should be clear about was when we're talking about this capacity, we're talking about external capacity. That's not Washington County capacity. That, those are our partners. So a couple answers that, one is we're wearing out poor Alex and, and the team who are getting this money out into the community. Number two is Alex said, we're paying a livable wage. So when our partnering organizations, twenty-two different providers, when they're going out and posting jobs for caseworkers, people to work in shelters like Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Fie when you came out last week and we met with some of those folks from Greater Good Northwest, those folks are getting a livable wage. That helps us in this job market. And three, it's just the, the continued expansion, understanding for every twenty people who we are trying to assist get into housing and stabilize, we need a case manager. So our expectation is to continue to grow this program out and get sixteen to seventeen hundred folks housed as, as adopted by your board in the local implementation plan. Then we're going to need to keep pushing this money out to our partners and helping them get hired up. So it's just been an all-around effort by our staff, by our community partners, and again, having those livable wages to help us get these programs staffed up.
Yeah, that's a great point, Josh, because actually I thought that that was our employment numbers, not our partners. And so And so, so yeah, that's, I appreciate that clarity in there. And maybe in that slide, somehow we need to incorporate that messaging and that this is not Washington County hiring 110 people, okay?
That's a great point. That's a really great point.
And then the other is, so how are we doing regionally? There are obviously three counties involved in this process. This is a great report. You know, we're really proud of what it is that we're doing. But do we have any comparatives? So how's the other two counties doing?
Yeah, I, you know, I, Jess probably has this information at her fingertips, but I'll say there was a recent article in the newspaper. And I, and I believe the total number of housed in the first year was somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 1600. But I'm grabbing that out of a node in the left ventricle of my brain. So Jess, tell me if I'm right or wrong on that.
That, that sounds right. And I, I think the context there, Commissioners, is excellent question, is that much like our experience growing from roughly a $5 million system to about a $70 million system, Clackamas County is embarking on the same kind of trajectory of starting from scratch with community partners, building out that infrastructure, contracting structure, getting folks hired. Whereas Multnomah County had a lot of that infrastructure already in place and was able to quickly increase the scope of those contracts. So the, I think what we learned in year one is the majority of placements happened in Multnomah County. Many of, of, much of that work also was in rent assistance. Whereas in Washington County, we focused on those supportive housing placements that partners, case management with rent assistance. So it's a slightly different first year. But all three counties are continuing to significantly scale up and set kind of ambitious goals for year two representing that continued program expansion.
Well, yeah, with the fact that this was projected when it was first passed to raise $250 million a year for 10 years. That's, that's a lot of money poured into programs in three different counties that would almost become a competition. But certainly it's a significant investment, I think, by our constituents. So, so yeah, and I think we're doing a great job. So thank you both, your team, what you're doing here. Any other comments? I'm assuming we are supportive of the submission of the annual SHS report to Metro? And? Anything else you guys need?
I believe that's it. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Comey. Thank you for your team, too. Okay, let me go back to where we are here.
Commissioner Willie, we are at break.
Oh, no, 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 we don't take breaks.
I'm seeing nods from your audience.
Oh, I see, I see. Well, okay, I guess if we should, we'll take a 15 minute break. We'll reconvene at 11:05. How's that sound? All right. Let's, we're, we're taking the break. Appointment discussion.
Commissioner Willie, now, now we're live.
You want me to do that again?
Yes.
Okay, we're on item three in our agenda. Advisory Council on Racial Equity Appointment Discussion. Latricia Tillman is our Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer. So welcome, Latricia.
Thank you, and good morning, Vice Chair Willie and Board. My name for the record is Latricia Tillman, Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer, and I'm here with Amanda Garcia Snell, our Community Engagement Manager, to discuss with you the applicants and recommendation for appointment to a midterm, although the Advisory Council on Racial Equity has not yet launched, but it is a vacancy we are hoping to fill in advance of the launch of ACRE. So Amanda, you can take a So Amanda, you can take it from here.
Thanks, Latricia. Hi, good morning. As you may recall and as Latricia mentioned, the Advisory Council on Racial Equity is a newly created body. We, your board, appointed thirteen new members in June, in addition to Chair Harrington and Commissioner Trees, who serve as the two board liaisons to the body. Since that time, one member has moved out of state. And so, we as staff contacted the six people who had submitted applications since our last recruitment, so between May twenty first and July thirty first, those applications were received. We connected with those folks, chatted with them, and based on that process, would like to recommend Lillian Si for appointment. We had a really great pool of people with a range of lived and professional experience, but Ms. Si has really strong lived and professional experience with equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging. And so, we would like to recommend her for appointment when we come back to you at regular session next week.
Great, okay, thank you. Is this, was this position specifically for District Four? Because I see out of the six, four of them were for, so, no, it just turned out that way.
No, it's like wide recruitment.
Okay, all right. Any questions, Commissioners? Not seen any, so I would say we agree with your choice and decision on that. And thank you very much for certainly putting all of this together. We look forward to your first meeting. When you have that scheduled, do you know?
It is scheduled for October third. Is that correct, Amanda?
Yes.
All right. Well, we're good then.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Let me see if I can actually go back. Yeah, next is the Appointment to Urban Roads Maintenance District Advisory Committee, ERMDEC, Stephen Roberts and Todd Watkins.
Actually, you've got me and Sheri, Commissioner.
All right. We have the eighteen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Todd Watkins, I'm the Division Manager for the Operations and Maintenance Division. And with me today is Sheri McFaul. She's our Community Programs Coordinator, and we are going to actually have two back-to-back items here that kind of merge together. So, I'm gonna turn over to Sheri, and she will go over those with you.
Thank you, Todd. I'm not sure which item is first. Is it the bylaws or the appointments?
It is the appointment.
It's the appointment, yeah. Bylaws are next.
So, we have on ERMDEC, Urban Road Maintenance District Advisory Committee. We have two vacancies and we have one applicant. Do you please, next line?
You have the clicker right on. Oh, that's fantastic, thank you.
And we don't have to rely on Kevin. Pressure was getting to him.
Now, the pressure's getting to me. So Meredith Cook is our sole applicant for one of the two vacancies in ERMDEC. Her term would begin October first and expire of 2022 and expire September 2026.
The right button. Is that it? Can I just ask a quick question? Since that's the only term expiring in twenty six, you have one in twenty five, one in twenty four, and a whole host in twenty three. So, we, we're gonna smooth that out a little bit? Or how, why does it work that way?
It works that way. The reason there are so many in twenty three, and we do plan on smoothing that out and adjusting some of the, some of the terms. But we, we hadn't, historically, we hadn't tracked midterm vacancies and made, anyone who came in in a midterm vacancy, they were allotted a four-year term, as though they were a new term. And so, there were a lot of them in 2019. And so, that's how it happened with the four-year terms. But we plan to adjust that to scale some to later years so that we don't have such a load of vacancies in 2024.
Yeah.
Once twenty three is over.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. And really, that's it. So Meredith comes to us, she actually comes to us because she had some ideas for communication on our pedestrian and biking improvement projects from our last selection year in 2021. And we always welcome folks to come onto the committee and share their thoughts and help us continually improve.
Okay. All right, any questions, Commissioners? See, none. Sounds good. We'll go along with that. And we'll move to the next item with the bylaws revision.
Terrific, thank you. The bylaw changes are very simple. Historically, this is for both ERMDEC, which we just discussed, and ROMAC, which is the Rural Roads Operations and Maintenance Advisory Committee. And they have typically had a, or they have had a January one to December thirty one term year for its membership. In order to ease some of the transition on January first and coming to the board in November and December for that, we decided to change the term year to start October first and end September thirtieth. And most of the bylaws for both advisory committees are, they're very similar, almost exactly the same, as you may have noticed as you, as you read them. ERMDEC, though, has the added responsibility of the pedestrian and biking improvement projects every other year in odd years. They wrap that up by September, and we come to the board in September or October with their, with their selections for approval. So an October first start date works well for both committees. So you have examples in your packet of the changes that we need to make, and all of them are geared toward October first start date.
Okay. Potential abatement order your board may make, and then a recommendation from staff. So the purpose of this work session item is to provide your board an overview of the nuisance conditions on a property and to seek your board's direction on whether you wish the county to cause an abatement of those nuisance conditions. The desired outcome here is that your board directs staff to bring forward an action item authorizing the county to cause abatement of these public health hazards. Policy question, should the county conduct an abatement of the public health hazards at the property on the address on the screen? There it is. So a little bit of background about this property. The property we're discussing is addressed 18171 Northwest Sellers Road, just north of Banks, Oregon. You can see on the map on the right here on the screen that the property is north of Highway twenty six off Sellers Road, and again, just north of Banks. Zoomed in on the property, you can see it's a fairly large parcel, seven point five three acres. It's zoned rural AF ten. It has a historic, I'd say it's classified as an auto wrecking yard or dump on the property. We understand it's not a conditional use or a use that was approved of the property prior to the accumulation. It has gone through some enforcement processes with used transportation as well. Quick timeline on the most recent kind of challenges and complaints. In March of 2017, there was a complaint received by multiple departments related to garbage, cars, boats, trailers being stored on the property. In September of 2017, LUT issued its first notice of violation for an illegal auto wrecking yard. In early 2018, HHS referred the case to the DEQ of the state for an illegal solid waste disposal site. The DEQ began its investigation and enforcement process in August of 2018. In March and April of 2019, LUT issued additional violation notices to the property owner. Then in April of 2019, DEQ issued its civil penalty for a fine of eighty seven thousand dollars for the operation of an illegal solid waste disposal site, ordered cleanup of the property to no avail. In May of 2019, LUT issued its final violation through a hearings officer, and there was a fine of twenty five thousand dollars placed on the property for the operation of an illegal solid waste, illegal auto wrecking yard. In July of nineteen, DEQ filed liens on the property for unpaid fines. In early 2022, the Public Health and Nuisance Investigation began. We received some communications from neighbors and were noticing that the accumulation was swiftly escalating and looked more and more like household garbage and other materials that were more of a risk to the public's health and safety. In July of 2022, after no, after not being granted access to the property by the property owner, we searched out a, or received a search warrant from the Justice of the Peace and conducted a search on the property with the public health officer and our code enforcement team. And then in just in August last month, our health officer issued an abatement order to the property owner. So the property search findings and conditions, we'll kind of walk through those. The health officer did find that the following conditions outlined on the screen here constituted a menace or hazard to the public's health, an excessive accumulation of waste, namely garbage, solid waste, petrifiable materials in various states of decay, accumulation of materials that pose safety to fire hazards, barrels containing potentially hazardous materials labeled as containing motor oil and other chemicals, lots of tires that are also a fire hazard, and then accumulation of materials that also are in, providing vector harborage for rats and other vermin on the property.
Is that picture from the property?
Yes, this is a picture from walking up the kind of right-of-way easement onto the property.
The issue concentrated on certain side of the property, or is it?
Yeah.
Because it's a huge.
It is a large property, and most of the recent accumulation that looks like this is occurring on the southeast and the eastern side of the property, and it's along the line, property line with the neighbors, and it almost appears to be used as a part of a neighbor dispute. So it's kind of appearing in that manner, too. There's also been involvement with the sheriff's office related to the dispute between the neighbors and this property owner.
Tom, did this, did you, did you take those pics? Did you take those pictures on site?
Yes.
Were you physically on that property?
Myself personally, I was not on the property. I've been on the, the public easement alongside the property, but the health officer and our code enforcement team did get access to the property on July twentieth, and these photos are from that, that property search.
Were they granted access by the owner of the property?
No, the owner of the property did not grant access, but we searched out, received a search warrant from the Justice of the Peace, Dan Cross, and he signed it on July twelfth for us to gain access to the property to conduct the investigation.
So that would allow us to be able to go on the property and take those pictures?
Yep.
Okay, thank, thank you for that clarification. We, in the past, have had some problems with walking on property, and it didn't come out real well. So I know Tom's sitting there, and he can probably off, off of this conversation, discuss that with you, but we want to be very careful.
Yes, absolutely. And we did ask permission multiple times, and we were not granted that permission. We had the sheriff's deputies serve letters to him asking for permission to the property owner, and we had no response from them. So we did go through the process of receiving a search warrant from the judge.
And is it a singular person?
Yes, single individual, male, late sixties, we would assume. We don't know much about him. So here's more of a overview of the, of the search and the findings. So on the left here, you can see that this is appearing to be household garbage. This is along the driveway easement. When you drive up the driveway, we're looking down on the picture on the right is actually how the neighbors access their home. So this is part of their daily driving to and from their home through this pile. We're not sure where the garbage is coming from. He's, appears to be bringing it in, in a pickup truck. The neighbors have noted that it seems to be escalating to a daily load coming in on the pickup truck. We don't know if it's being, so, if he's being paid to do it or where it's coming from. So that's something we would hope to find if we were to conduct an abatement. We have talked with the state that if we do identify generators that are knowingly sending waste to this property, that would help with enforcement action for those generators as well.
Now, do these look like bottles? Or do they actually look like regular, regular household waste?
Yeah, there is bottles in there, so there could be an attempt to be, do, looking for redemption containers, but a lot of it appears to be in the white kitchen bags, like the Glad bags, which makes us, leads us to believe that it's household garbage, and we're not sure if it's being pulled out of dumpsters or garbage bins or where it's coming from. Okay, there it is. So we, on the search, the, the team went, started on the southeast corner, and they moved to the west along a tree line between the neighbor's property and the property owner here. And as we move along the tree line, the accumulation gets a little more historic, and it changes a little bit in nature. There's a lot of tires on the property. You can see there's piles of tires on this tree line, and then there's continued piles of this wet waste garbage. There's also a pretty large quantity of abandoned vehicles and RVs. The state estimates about one hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty vehicles are on the property as well, in various states of disrepair. Further along the west of the proper, moving along the southern tree line, you can just see more of the same, the vehicles and RVs. On the picture on the right here, when the team got further into the property, it was more of a historic accumulation, so a lot of the stuff had been grown, overgrown by brush. And you can see that material's been there a lot longer, so it's not the current stuff that's coming onto the property necessarily. This is back along on the north side of the property and coming along the neighbor's driveway easement. Again, this is more of the bagged waste that's being accumulated and is pretty recent accumulations. And you can see that some of those kitchen bags are being ripped open and spilling and probably as a result of scavenging from wildlife or vectors. So the health officer did issue an abatement order to the property owner on August fifth. The deadline for that property owner to respond was August twentieth. They were also entitled to request a hearing from your board, based on our code, within five days of receiving that order. And they have, we have not heard anything back from the property owner. They've been completely non-responsive to our investigation enforcement processes up to this point. So the next step in Chapter eight point two zero, which is the Public Health Nuisance Code, does have a section that allows that if the nuisance has not been abated by the property owner within the time allowed by the chapter, the Board of the County Commissioners may, at the request of the health officer, cause the nuisance to be abated, which essentially means the county has the authority, or your board has the authority to issue an order that would put the county in the driver's seat to cause the abatement itself. We have contacted multiple contractors to talk about the, the scope and scale of this abatement. And we, and I will put a disclaimer here that this is a Public Health and Nuisance Code investigation, so any abatement that is conducted under the authority of eight two zero would not include removing abandoned vehicles, scrap metal piles. It would be more focused on things that are an immediate risk to the health and safety of the community, like tires, the uncontained, unlabeled hazardous potentially chemicals, and the household garbage and waste materials. We, estimates are pretty rough. We can't get a contractor on site to walk the job, and they all wanted to go see it themselves. But since we don't have permission to be on the property, we had to use photos and aerial imagery and kind of describe the situation to the contractors. And we're estimating that it's gonna be between one hundred and seventy-five and three hundred thousand dollars to do the abatement of the materials causing the public health risks.
Can I ask you a question on the date? First bullet point, August fifth, and then the deadline to respond was August twentieth. Why that short a period of time, considering the magnitude of the problem?
Yeah, so it's all kind of walk laid out in the nuisance code. So it provides fifteen days for a response. If, the nuisance code actually says fifteen days to remedy the violations, which would be impossible. We couldn't clean it up in fifteen days with a contractor. So we were looking at more indication from the property owner that they're willing to have a conversation and work towards a plan of resolution, but there was no response whatsoever from the property owner. But those timelines are kind of really succinctly laid out in the nuisance code. So the recommendation, staff along with the health officer recommends that your board issues this order to conduct the abatement. We will note that a funding source will need to be identified as until such a time that the property owner reimburses the county or lien is issued and collected upon. So the nuisance code does say that the county can cause the abatement. The county can bill the property owner for those costs. We don't anticipate this property owner would pay or can pay those costs because it's a really big job. The county would then be entitled to place a lien on the property to potentially recuperate the costs in any type of foreclosure proceedings. That's kind of the pathway that the nuisance code takes us down in terms of these types of situations. And the health officer is prepared to make a request to your board, and the code does require the health officer to request an abatement from your board, and she is prepared to do that. And I'm back to the policy question that we all know is, should we, should the county conduct an abatement of these public health hazards? And that concludes my presentation.
Roy, do you have any comments, questions?
A couple things. One is, I mean, this is not a decision-making point. We need to bring this back to the rest of the board meeting. It needs to be abated. I don't, I don't have any qualms about that. It's a terrible site, not, not good for the neighbors, not good for water quality, not good for the environment in many, many ways. My bigger question is, I think I've seen My bigger question is, I think I've seen only one or two of these in my career at the county. And I've always wondered why in the world they come to the board. There should be some clear and very objective criteria that should that occur that we grant the staff the ability to go out and get this stuff done. So it, it, it seems like something that is so egregious. This is over five years old. I mean, if I were living next to him, I wouldn't be happy at all. So five years it's been going on and finally it's going to obviously come to the board. We've got to make a determination, which I know for one, I'm saying yes, absolutely. I don't know where the rest of you are, but it just seems like we ought to consider clear, objective criteria that will allow staff to be a lot more responsive to the public than than we are currently allowed to be. So those are my comments.
Thanks, Commissioner Rogers. That's a, that's a good comment. It's timely too. Marnie Kyle is actually leading a project team to review our code enforcement processes holistically kind of across the county. And one of the outcomes of that hopefully is that we set kind of a more intentional course on how we manage code enforcement as an organization and what type of posture the county takes in those types of processes. And I think one of those outcomes is certainly that the, the public health nuisance code that our, my division manages needs to be updated to include some more objective criteria. It's a challenging code to administer at this point and it puts a lot of burden on the health officer, I would say, who's a medical doctor, who's not necessarily familiar with many of these types of processes and investigations. So I think that developing some objective criteria and redesigning the code into the future is definitely something that we need to do as an organization.
Great presentation. This is a really complex issues that I have a lot more questions than I anticipated. But without disrupting your process, I will say, go ahead and I'll give you my thumbs up to move forward with your project, but I do have some concerns. And I think we need to figure out what else is in our toolbox that we can use to help this person. And what is the, you know, how does mental health fit in this? What do we know about the individual? You said a man in his late sixties. With that kind of a property, with the amount that you're imposing, I doubt it's going to have a too much of an impact in terms of who gets the property or if he had to re, you know what I mean? So I, I think of the financial aside, I think we need to figure out what else, how can, how can we help? How can we be a county that's responsible to the individuals that live in our county? And how can we figure out what the problem is? And if I agree with Commissioner Rogers, if I was a neighbor, I would have a problem with that amount. But I don't want us to be shoresighted and slap on order and say you have to put a lien on your property with this much. And then leave the problem as it is and leave it there. And then five years later, we're back to the same situations and then another lien. So I think, I think we need to create an opportunity to look back into mental health and figure out what is in our, how can we help this individual? And what can we, what can we learn without invading their own privacy as well as a resident? What, what, what help can we offer as a county? Because I don't feel comfortable with that kind of a problem without addressing the mental health piece. I, I feel uncomfortable saying, let's impose a fine and then leave forward, you know, move forward. So I think, you know, with the next step, I'm looking more of, you know, how do we mitigate this for future residents? And then this immediate problem, how can we help this resident? Because clearly the individual needs help. And, and the residents, the neighbors need help as well to, you know, to ease their problems. But so thumbs up for me. But I think, I think we have a lot more questions to answer from a compassionate perspective that's built into the policymaking. Because I think we need to consider health in, in all policies. But we also also provide compassion to the person that we're imposing all these policies to.
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner Fai. And we have worked with the Department of Aging and Veteran Services to try to identify resources and make contact with this individual. And it's, nothing has been successful up to this point. And so it's been a really challenging time. And I could say that, you know, the Dr. Baumann in particular also expressed a lot of these same concerns about what is the mental health capacity of this individual? How can we get help? And do we know what living conditions they're in and can we look at some other avenues to help treat this individual? And help them, you know, with whatever they're experiencing. So I think that's something that the team really wants to try to lean into, but it's really challenging. And I've, you know, I personally experienced the, the difficulties navigating the mental health system in the state with somebody that's not willing to engage with apparent mental health issues. So I know that it's a really tough, you know, track to go down, but it doesn't mean that we can't lean into that and really do need to try to leverage those resources.
Thank you, Tom. And I, I just want to underscore that. Commissioner Fai, thank you so much for your comments. Definitely the, the health and well-being of this particular individual i- is, is a concern of ours. And as Tom said, there's been multiple efforts to outreach to the individual. But as we all know, people do have the right to accept or refuse assistance. And in this particular case, that this individual has been non-responsive, non-compliant and really hasn't been willing to engage in anyone who's made outreach. We have lots of examples of cases where that's not the story and where we do reach out to individuals who are accumulating excess garbage or waste. And they are, you know, willing to communicate with us and then we are able to help them access services that they need. So we definitely hear your concern and, and join you in that concern. This case is fairly unique in, in the, you know, obviously the excess of accumulation and the unwillingness of the individual to engage with us in any way, shape or form. But thank you absolutely for your comments.
Well, let me just give you some, a little bit more background too. I have visited this location, staying on Sellers Road as we were advised by the sheriff's department. And that was about a year ago. Since that time, he has, the owner of this property has significantly increased hauling in garbage now on a daily run with his truck, bringing in bags of garbage. When the neighbors have tried to approach him, he retaliates against them by bringing in more garbage, now stacking it on their property. Has threatened to cut down some trees, which actually shields them from a lot of the garbage. So he is not in a mindset of let's find a happy place here. He has also, you know, obviously, let's see, how do I say this? He's basically been giving us the finger for about three years now on any kind of notices, DEQ, conversations, anything. He does not respond and, and has now significantly increased the issue with bringing in more garbage. And then I think that's primarily it as of late. I guess my question to you, Tom, is we have been communicating with the DEQ. As you pointed out here in April two thousand nineteen, they issued a notice of civil penalty, eighty-seven thousand dollar fine. We've issued a twenty-five thousand dollar fine, neither of which have made any impact whatsoever. Where's, where's DEQ in this? And how do we get the hundred plus cars removed at the same time?
Yeah, it's a really good question, Commissioner Willie. The DEQ is kind of at the end of their ability to enforce. They have placed a lien on the property. The DEQ does manage a fund called the Solid Waste Orphan Fund, but it's not eligible to be used to clean up private property and control a private property owner. So it's not just a, a fund that can go out and clean up solid waste sites that are these accumulations across the state. They don't have enough money to do that. They have more of these properties across the state. The fund is designed for properties that become, prop, become under control of the local governments. And say like an old landfill that was abandoned, that the local government took through tax foreclosure, for example, is a good example of what the solid waste orphan fund helps clean up. So the DEQ has signaled to us that this is a property that they think would qualify for the solid waste orphan fund if it was under the control of the county. And so that's a, a part of this, where this could go is if liens are filed on the property and the property owner continues to do what he's doing and continues to provide or continues to accumulate materials and continues to cause a nuisance. Those liens could eventually potentially be foreclosed upon. The county could file for receivership on that property and take control of that property. And in that case, the whole property could be cleaned up as a legal solid waste disposal site under the orphan fund. That's a theoretical roadmap and that's a potential roadmap, I think. But at this point, we, we're not there yet because we're just kind of getting to the point where we have that type of potential pathway forward. The property taxes are fully paid. We've had a property like this in Timber a decade ago and those, that property owner wasn't paying property taxes and it went through this tax foreclosure process and it ended in a property tax foreclosure. And that site ultimately came under the control of the county and was cleaned up by the county. I don't think that site had, was an orphan fund site, but that is a potential pathway for final cleanup of a property like this.
Basically, DEQ is a toothless tiger in this regards.
Well, yeah, I mean, DQ is trying to, you know, follow their authorities and their processes and they feel like they've hit as far as they could in a sense. So we were in close communication with the EQ and we're trying to strategize on how do we make sure this doesn't happen again? Because that's one of our biggest concerns is we go up there and spend two hundred thousand dollars cleaning it up. And then the truckloads start coming in the next week and it's just, we're back in the same place we were a year later. And that's a concern that all of us have as well as the, the state neighbors.
So according to the neighbors, he's an unlicensed, uninsured driver. And nobody knows where he goes daily to pick up this stuff and bring it back? Is that outside the purview of our sheriff's department to? I mean knowingly that he is in violation of laws regarding driving and insurance and everything else. Is there, is there nothing we can do with that?
Well, I can't speak fully for the sheriff's department, but I know we've been working with several deputies that have been involved with him. There's some disputes. There was an attempted aggravated assault. He was lodged in the jail for a week and a half, about three or four weeks ago. I think there's a trial on the end of November for that incident. They are aware that he's driving without a, with a suspended license is my understanding and they are watching out for his vehicle. So they're not actively looking for it, but they are, they have a watch for it on the road. That's my understanding.
We still don't know where he goes to get the garbage.
We don't.
How would the neighbors know uninsured with no license?
I don't know. I didn't ask.
I'm not sure if they're where they got that information, but with the sheriff's office did, the deputy that we're working with did look in the records and he's, has a suspended license. That's what we've been told.
To the path that you just described, that said potential, sounds like the path to homelessness.
It does.
I think we need to be careful that we could be creating one more homeless person in Washington County. My question, Tom, is like, and I guess the other Tom, if it's not correct, correct me. Is there a way to know how many liens are on the property? Can we know that information next time you come back to the board?
Yeah, so we have actually done a preliminary title report, which is what we do to pull information to understand what encumbrances and liens are on the property. It's not necessarily much. There was a small civil fine for like in the three hundred and fifty dollars range from the circuit court or justice court that went unpaid. There is the DEQ fine that was filed to lien. The fine from the county in LUT has not been filed to lien. I think it's, I understand it's in collections and so it hasn't been actually moved over to lien yet. And those are the two liens on the property that, that are on it right now.
I can understand your concern, Fisa, about this property owner's well-being, but I'm much more concerned about if you live next door to that. For five years, as you watch the garbage increase and the situation worsen, these people are going to have to move out of their homes to find a different lifestyle. And I think we have to take that into consideration, quite frankly, more than this person who has repeatedly refused to have any kind of conversations and is now retaliating against them because they're trying to get something done. So I realize that this person may probably have mental health issues. But you can lead a horse to water, you know, that's where he is. If he has mental health issues, we're certainly willing to facilitate whatever his willingness to participate. But if he does not participate, that's not on us. We have to take into consideration the property owners around it. So Tanya, I asked you yesterday, we have to provide a funding source. Could you give us a little information on that?
Yeah, so prior to today's presentation, staff did consult with Greg Munn, our CFO. And how we would handle this situation is that if the board authorizes the abatement, there would be a budget supplemental and it would be a general fund expenditure. This is not a planned expenditure. We do not have a fund to handle abatement. So it would need to just be balanced with our general fund expenses. Commissioner Fai, to your question and ensuring that we are a people-focused, human-centered organization within our approach, as we look at properties, tax foreclosures, we have had a very successful one Washington County approach with multiple departments coming together to work with individuals, contact community members to find a path forward and to look at even creative breeding of sources to keep people in their homes. So I, I'm very confident in the approach that staff are taking, even though all that information may not be shared today. And I would suggest maybe Mira and Tom, maybe there's a, just an individual one-on-one. Commissioner Fai, to address those concerns that you have.
Yeah, just, just pointed out that the public health issue that we're addressing applies to that individual as well. That's just the point right here. That is not just the neighbors, but everyone, including that individual.
So obviously what we do not want to do is spend this kind of money to only have him immediately begin to bring garbage back in again. So what enforcement can we, can, I mean, does any of our garbage hauler rules apply to an individual who daily brings in garbage from someplace? Obviously, it's not his.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, I maybe look at Council Car here too, thinking about the, the pathway forward. And the nuisance code doesn't really contemplate somebody that just continues to do it over and over again after the county cleans it up. And so as an organization, we'd have to consider what opportunities are available to us. And I think those would be legal remedies that would include, you know, the type of things I talked about, like foreclosure and receivership. And I don't know if you have any thing to add on that, Mr. Carr?
It sounds like he's acting like an unlicensed hauler.
Yeah.
But tha- that's a fine, you know. And we've already levied, levied a lot of fines on them. And at some point, the fines are going to exceed the value of the property. And so I'm not sure that it's worth the effort to, to go, but we, we could, we could certainly take a look back.
Well, and yeah, I'm, I'm not a big fan of of giving any more fines out because obviously that makes no impact. But I would, I would like to us to consider some sort of enforcement action that prohibits him from doing that in the future. And like you said, Tom, that if we can find the source of where he's getting this garbage. Well, this doesn't seem to be rocket science stuff. I don't know. Certainly none of us want to jump in the car and start following this individual. But I mean, he's not, he's not traveling hundreds of miles in that vehicle that he's got to get this. So this doesn't seem to be so difficult. I don't know how we would legally go about doing this.
Well, absolutely, that is one, something we're very aware of and the state, the DQ hasn't told us that if, if a generator, a waste generator is knowingly disposing of waste on that property or giving that waste or paying for that waste to be delivered there through the property owner, then they are liable for some of that. And the state is interested in helping us in this and they would take and follow those leads and take enforcement action or notify those generators of waste that this is where it's ending up and it's an illegal disposal site and you're violating state law by depositing it there. The concern is that the generators might not know that it's being collected and it might just be coming out of dumpsters, you know, being stolen from dumpsters behind businesses. And so those are questions that we don't have answers to. And I think if we do get on the property and we do cause an abatement, we do illegal waste, legal dumping investigations all the time. And illegal dumper's aren't very good at hiding their personal information, prescription bottles or mail in their garbage. And so there will be leads for us to follow in terms of where it might be coming from. Now, if it's a bunch of residential addresses, that's going to be really challenging because I wouldn't assume that there's some type of garbage service happening. It would just be getting pulled out of bins, but it's definitely. But it's definitely something we are interested in following and trying to look into for sure.
Can I ask a question? Have you approached the sheriff to see if he can? I don't know. Let us borrow a patrol officer to follow one day where he's picking up and to do that kind of investigative work.
We haven't necessarily asked for that, but we could talk to them certainly. Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Fai, it's unlikely he would go do it if he saw a sheriff's car behind him.
Well, the sheriff, these days, they drive unmarked cars.
Yeah.
I saw a car that stopped somebody that were unmarked, but they had the lights on.
We can certainly check, but that's a commit, that's a significant commitment of sheriff's department resources.
If it's, yeah, if it balances out, you're right about the cost. If, if it's going to take too much, you know, before we do a lien, maybe we can invest in that part, but yeah.
Certainly reach out to the sheriff's.
Considering that he does this daily.
One day.
I wouldn't think this, again, this would be too difficult. But we got to stay within the guidelines of what we are legally capable of doing, so. Okay. Do you have the information that you need? I think you've got.
I think we do, yes. We'll bring back an action item or we'll talk with council about what that actually looks like. Because this is very rare, so we'll bring that back to your future meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much for your work on this. I know I've pestered you now for a couple of years on this. I appreciate you staying with us. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay. Let's see, I think that takes us to our conclusion.
Terry, can I ask one question on that item? Because it, it didn't tell me when it's coming back. And I, I appreciate everybody's thoughts on compassion and various other issues. I tend to see people need to be responsible for their actions. And I'd like to see it cleaned up, but we'll see what majority of the board says. When is that, Todd, going to come back?
We'll shoot for the twenty seventh.
Of this week or month?
Of month, yes. So we'll try to turn it around as fast as we can and get stuff in this week.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Anything, Roy? We good?
Jerry, can I make one last announcement? You, the board has recently received, well, this morning, received an updated jail tour, which will, which will be our statutory requirement of operations of the jail. It will also include capital condition tour for an hour. So I would strongly encourage all board members to be there because this is a really important update, not only of our operations, which the board annually sees, but also I do want to take the opportunity to make sure that the board is, has, sees the capital needs of the jail as well.
Yeah, this will be a very interesting jail tour, different than some of our historical ones have been.
Correct.
And if I'm reading my calendar correctly, that's October twenty fifth from ten o'clock to one o'clock.
Correct, and lunch will be provided.
Okay, not in the cafeteria though.
In the jail.
In the jail.
We're not talking about the food, but anyway.
It is jail food.
So anyway, okay, thanks. Sorry.
You get lunch provided.
All right, anything else? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.